I'll take a look. But three dimensional Euclidean vectors. You said along that one handed this type of vectors. There's no need to distinguish between covariant and concave vectors in R three. Or perhaps the city consequences. Not having to distinguish between two kinds of. Tensors. The three dimensional Euclidean vectors. This is B three. The base of the Euclidean vectors. And your basis for these vectors spaces, I J K. Put another way, A one, A two, A three. The obvious why we choose. A one, A two, A three, instead of I J K. We choose I J K, then we run out of. Indices. We suppose we go beyond three dimensions. Given two vectors in R three. Or B three. We define their vector product as A cross B equals epsilon I J K. E I, A J, B K. This is determinant of the matrix, A one, A two, A three. A one, A two, A three, A one, B two, B three, if I'm familiar with that standard. Even if. The epsilon notation. Is strange. Let us look at the properties of the vector product. One, A plus B minus B plus A. A plus B plus C is A plus B plus A plus C. A cross B plus C is A dot C minus A dot B C. A cross B dot C cross D is A dot C, B dot D, minus A dot D, B dot C. This is that there's no ambiguity in. Of default. A cross B, you be together, and you dot it is C cross D. Because A cross B dot C makes no sense. Because this dot C is a scalar. I cannot find a cross product of a vector A. The scalar B plus, B dot C. A cross B plus C plus B plus C plus A plus C plus A plus B is zero. And A plus B equals, we're lost of A, we're lost of B, sine theta. And we are here, N is the unit vector, appropriate to A and B. And determined by the right hand screw. That's how we can prove all this. One and two are clear, so we don't need to bother about that. Three, A plus B plus C is epsilon I J K, E I, A J, B plus C, K. This is that we are considering A as a vector and B plus C as the other vector involved in the cross product. Remember. A plus B is epsilon I J K. E I. A J, B K. What is the gradient B in this case is B plus C, so B plus C, okay. That's going to be epsilon I J K, E I, A J. You're writing B plus C K. Remember that B plus C K indicates components of B plus C. That will be epsilon K, P Q, B P, C Q. We brought in too much, this is P and Q. Here we brought in J and K earlier. We bring out the two epsilon. Tensors, so epsilon I J, epsilon K P Q, E I, A J. B P, C Q. For you to combine the two epsilon tensors. You have to write them in such way that they each begin with the same index, K in this case. Because some, epsilon I J K, there's no K I J. You allow K to come from, come in front of I. Then. Those we still get the same. But. That's not K I J, we've seen that before, because K P Q, E I, A J, B P, C Q. Now what is the long J K I J, there's no K P Q, that's delta I P, delta J Q. And delta I Q, delta J P. Look at that, I P. P S. Then J Q as well. Then minus delta I Q. Delta G P. Then, this is the combination of the two epsilon. Tensors. Then, it's E one, I, A J, B P, C Q. So we're not allowed. Just choose whatever I want. Usually I prefer I J K because I have I J K. So for delta I P, we set P equal to I. For that I J Q, I set T equal to K. So you get E I, B I. No, we said J is an. A Q rather. Is J. So we're going to get C K. We said. T. Is I. So B becomes B I. That's why you have E I, B I, A J, C Q. From the second pair of data. This is that I Q, that I J P, you get minus E I, A J, B J, C I. Now we'll group. E I, B I, A J, C J. Minus E I. C I, A J, B J. What is E I B I? That is B. It has B. Into A dot C minus E I C I is C into A dot B. Actually, that should not be B I, it should be B because E I B I is B. And E I C I is C, why is that so? Because E I B I, just like saying, I, B one, plus J, B two, plus K, B three. In this case, E one, B one, because you have repeated indices, E one, B one. Plus E two, B two, plus E three, B three. Likewise, you have E one, C one, plus E two, C two, plus E three, C three, which is C. So you can just skip this part. And jump to this. Don't forget that, A dot C, A J, C J is A one, C one, plus A two, C two, plus A three, C three, which is. The dot product of A and C. Again, instance, summation, convention. That done. Take a look at four. A cross B, dot C cross D. This is this triple scalar product. End product is a scalar. We'll write as A, B, C cross D in a bracket, in an angle brackets. This will be equal to B plus C plus D dot A. Since. The triple scalar product of X Y Z is X dot Y plus Z. So you're going to get C. Just bear in mind that we just had A cross B cross, now you have B plus C cross D. So instead of A, you put B. Instead of B, you put C. You will see, put D into the last expression here. We're going to get C into B dot D, not into B dot C dot A. Now B dot D is a scalar, B dot C is also a scalar. So you just get A dot C. Because B dot D can come out, I love it, C dot A, which is also A dot C. Likewise, B dot C comes out here, but let it's A dot D, D dot D. So that everyone's improved. Five, A plus B plus C plus B plus C plus A plus C plus A, A plus B. It'd be the expression you can see there, which is initial in zero. We are just making use of. Number three. A cross B with loss squared is A cross B dot A cross B. So for that, A. With loss squared is A dot A. So A cross B with loss squared is A plus B dot A cross B. Should be equal to, we have seen such an expression before. It's A cross B dot A cross C. That is question four. Appropriately, I'm going to get A dot A. Into B dot B, minus A dot B into A dot B. Plus, we're lost of A squared. We're lost of B squared, minus, it's also product of A and B squared. That's we're lost A squared, we're lost B squared, minus. Plus A dot B squared, that is, we're lost of A squared, we're lost of B squared. Plus squared, that is cos, that is not costita. If you factor out, we're lost of A squared, we're lost of B squared. We're going to get that out there into one minus cos theta. One minus cos theta is sine theta, so you arrive at the expression. We're lost of A squared, we're lost of B squared, sine squared. If you choose the positive root. You're going to get left hand side, take the root, A plus B with loss. It'd be equal to, we're lost of A, we're lost of B, sine theta. You chose the right handed convention, if you are choosing the left handed convention, would have got minus. Because don't forget, when you square, minus will disappear, you still get the same expression on the left. So A plus B, we conclude, equals, we're lost of A, we're lost of B, sine theta, N. Yeah, and the unit vector, the traditional, the blood to A and B. Six point one one, grad divergence and call of a Euclidean vector. That E one, E two, it could be the standard basis for R three, then we shall use the following notation. D K is D G X K, that is. V one, B T two one, D G X one, D two, B D G X two, and D three, B D G X three. Once you do that. You find that, you can write grad as G one, D two, D three. And A dot grad will be A K, D K. Because remember that, repeated indices denote summation. Pi takes R three to R. The scalar field, because it assigns to a point in three dimensions, a real number that is in R. As an example, pi, X, Y, Z is X squared, Y minus X Y Z. You can see, on the right, you have just a single function. Of the three. Uh, points, I mean, the three coordinates of a single point. So you are going from three dimensions, a point in three space. To. A number, which is in R. As I say, pi takes R three to R. Rad of pi is E K, D K, five, you're quite familiar with that, rad of pi is. The one you're familiar with is I D T X of five, plus G, D Y of five, plus K, D Z of five. Which in instance, convention, may be E K, D K, by applied to five. U is a vector field, as it takes R three to R three. That is, what we're going to get is a vector. It assigns to a point in three dimensions, a vector, an example is electrical, gravitational field. That is why. Take a look at, um. Electric field. Or force. You go from, you're at a point, let's say, as really electric field. You're at a point, X, Y, Z. And what you're going to get is an electric field, which is a vector in three dimensions as well. The divergence of U is D I, U I, that is, D one, U one, plus D two, U two, plus D three, U three. Familiar with that as, D G X of U X, plus D Y of U Y, plus D Z of U Z. Call of U, your call is like cross product, is indeed the cross product. Of the D operator and a vector. That will give you epsilon I J K, E I, D J, U K. Just look at that, D J is plain rule of A in A cross B. And U K is plain rule of B in A cross B. You can also find the gradient of a vector. Okay, that will be D, D X one, U one, D X of U one, D X of U one, D X three of U one, that forms the first term. Then, D X one of U two, D X two of U two, D X three of U two. Finally, the last row, D X one of U three, D X of U three, D X, D X three of U three. If you look at the trace of this three by three matrix. They're going to find that the trace of gradient of U. Is divergence of U, because that trace is going to be D, D X one of U one, plus D X of U two, plus D X three of U. Let us look at practice often. The differential operator, grad of G F is grad F T, not G F plus D grad. Just like, um. Product rule. The divergence of phi U is phi divergence of U plus grad of phi dot U. The divergence of U cross V equals V cross U minus U cross V. Call of phi U is phi cross U plus grad phi cross U. Call of U cross V, because U div minus V W plus U dot V, U dot grad V minus V dot grad U. The divergence of call of U is zero. One and two are clear. Three. The divergence of U cross V is D I, U cross V I. We're back to the last page. Said divergence of U is D I, U I. But, are you in this case, is actually U cross V, so you could be I. I would be D I, then make U cross V be in the form, epsilon I J K, U J, B K. This is the S component, so you also have epsilon I, then J K, U J, B K. Bring out the tensor, epsilon I J K. And apply D I to U J and B K. Then, remember. Product. So epsilon I J K, D I, U J, B K, plus epsilon I J K, D I, B K, U J. So allow epsilon, don't allow K to come first. You know, epsilon I J K, it's not as okay, I J. You don't do anything strange by writing. Epsilon K I K, D I, U J, B K. Minus. Epsilon G I K, what did, what did you do there? You swapped I and you know, you swap. Two indices in the tensor epsilon. It becomes minus what it was before, that's why I have minus, epsilon G I K, epsilon K, I J K. Epsilon minus epsilon G I K. E I, B K, U J, just repeat, repeat those ones. This will be equal to call U K, that is the K component of call U, that is, epsilon K I J, D I, U J. That's the K component of call U. And B K minus, epsilon G I K. D I, B K is the G component of call V. I just multiply by, because we're going to get call U K, B K, minus call V J, U J. Since the indices are repeated, that means what you have is a dot product. That's B, that's call U dot V or V dot call U. Minus U dot call V. Four, call of phi U, so epsilon I J K, E I, D J, phi U K. Because that's the K component of phi U. So you're going to get phi, epsilon, because phi is a scalar. Phi, I J K, just a number. E I. D J, U K, plus epsilon, epsilon I J K, E I, D J phi, U K. That is phi call U, plus grad of phi, plus U. I mean, phi is a killer, a killer function. Call of U cross V is epsilon I J K, E I, D J, U cross V K. Which is epsilon I J K, D I, D K, epsilon K P Q, U P, V Q. Which is equal to, epsilon I J K, epsilon K P Q, E I, D J, U P, V Q. We write this as, epsilon K I J, not K P Q, for obvious reason. E I, D J, U P, the obvious reason is that we want to combine the two. Tensors, there's no K I J, there's no, there's no I J K and no K P Q. It's imperative then that they each start with K. So you get delta I P, delta J Q, or delta I Q, or J P. E I, U P, V J, V Q, but V Q, D J, U P. Which equals, E I, U I, D J, V J, minus V J, D J, V I, I'm sure you can handle. That, plus the second term on the right. That will be equal to, you, that's E I U I, you're going to shoot, and D J, V J is div B. U J, D J is U dot grad. Then V plus V dot. Grad, which is V J, D J, the E I U I is U. Minus V divergence of U. Why do we say, now see, why we said U, that's E I U I, on the other side, we got. E I, V I, which is V, that is here. E I. Yeah, that's what was seen, B. That's call of U, after you should not put zero here. You are getting ahead of ourselves. So this will be equal to D I, call U, by definition. Which is D I, epsilon I J K, D K, U K. Because I J K will come forward, then D I, D J, U K. Because, because I J K, we can interchange, D J and D I. So get D J, D I, U K. It will be equal to minus J I K, we swapped J and I. The minus must come in, we just repeat, D J, D I, U K. You got to minus, D J, epsilon J I K, D I, okay. Which is minus D J, what is epsilon, J I K, D I, you could add the G component of call U. Well, call U J. You can see, D J, call U J, that will be minus divergence of call of U. Since I call of U is minus I call of U, it implies that I call of U must be. Zero. Because when X plus minus X, then X must be zero, there is a point where. The. Positive and the negative meet. That's why, you have minus one and plus one distance. But minus zero, plus zero at the same point. On the. Day number nine. Here's an example, given that U one equals X one, X two, X three. U two equals X one, X two, and U three equals X one. In our usual language, that should be U one equals X Y Z. U two equals X Y, and U three equals X. So find I U and call U. So that call of call U equals grad of I U, and hence, reduce that, in this case. Just grad U equals zero. Here's the solution. I U is D I, U I, which is D one, U one, plus D two, U two, plus this way, U K. Which, we then, give us. X one plus X two, X, because D one, U one. D one, U one. Will be equal to X two, X three. And D two, U two, is just X one. D three, U three is zero. You put all that together, you arrive at X one plus X two, X three. Grad of divergence of U, will be the grad of X one. Plus X two, X three, there should be a bracket, yeah. That's gradient of that scalar, because X one plus X two, X three is a scalar. Like we called, I, D one, plus J, D two, plus K, D three, applies to X one, plus X two, X three. What is I, D X one of X one, one, so you get only I. And D X one of X one is one. Likewise, you get D two. Acting on X one plus X two, X three, but I'm going to give you X three, right? So you get X three J plus X two A. Because this D three, D X three of X two, X three is X two. Call of U is I, D two, U three, minus three, U two, plus J, D three, U one. Minus D one, U three, plus K, D one, U two, minus D two, U one. Put all that together, you're going to arrive at J into X one, X two, minus one, plus K into X two, minus X one, X three. Call of call U. Just take the call of that last expression, that's going to be I, D two, X two. Minus X one, X three. And as D three, X one, X two, minus one, plus J into minus D one, X minus X one, X three. Plus K, D one, to X one, X two, minus one. I'm sure you know how we got that, we cheated. Take a look at call of U. Finally, it gave us J into X two, minus move, plus K into X two. Minus X one, X three, just to go back to the definition of call. Where I got I plus X three J plus X two K. So by conclusion, you can see that one and two are the same. So grad I U equals call of call U, but call of call U is grad I U minus the squared U. Therefore, the squared U must be zero. There's a lot. Example, if phi of X Y Z is three X squared, Y minus Y cubed, Z squared. Again, you can see, this is scalar field, try taking R three to R. Find one, we are far at the point, one minus two minus one. And two. The divergence of grad of phi. Three, grad of grad of phi, hence. Three, grad of grad of five, hence reduce that. The divergence of grad of grad of five equals six Y into one minus Z squared, minus Y Z. One, phi of X Y Z is three X squared, Y minus Y cubed, Z squared. The gradient of that will give you six X Y I, plus three X squared, minus three Y squared, Z squared, K. Minus two Y cubed. Z A. Z A is a scalar, not vector, it's not the board. At the point, one minus two minus one, you get six into minus, into minus two I. You can put all that together, wherever, minus twelve I, minus nineteen, minus sixteen K. Three, grad of five will be six, X Y I, plus three X squared, minus three Y squared, Z squared, K. Minus two Y cubed, Z K. So already, what you got before. And I'm taking the variance on that, that will be D. X of six X Y plus D Y of three X squared, minus three Y squared, Z squared. Plus D Z of minus two Y cubed, Z. That will be equal to six Y minus six, Y Z squared, minus two Y cubed. Or two Y into three, minus three, Z squared, minus Y squared. The grad of five. Grad of grad of five is going to be. D, remember the grad of a vector. That will be D, D X of X Y, six X Y. D, D Y of six X Y, D Z of six X Y. D, D X of three X squared, minus three Y squared, Z squared. With D D Y of that same expression, D Z of that same expression. Then the last row, D X of minus two Y cubed, Z. D D Y of the same expression, D Z of the same expression, we do all that. Guess six Y, six Z, zero. You get that turn. Matrix. And the divergence of that. Matrix is the trace. Of that matrix. Which is six Y, don't forget that we said, divergence of U is. The trace of that. Matrix, which is the sum of the diagonal elements, is six Y into one minus Z squared, minus Y Z. Six point one point two, principal variance of the second rank, that is, then. Let A be equal to A one one, A one two, A one three. The usual, we will write a matrix. The characteristic equation is given by A minus lambda I equals zero, I'm sure you're familiar with that, is the determinant. From which you get the values of lambda. For the eigenvale equation. A equals, A U equals lambda U. So. Minus lambda cubed, plus A one one, lambda squared, that's the determinant of that matrix. Plus A two two lambda squared, plus A three three lambda squared, plus all that expression. Equals zero. You collect like terms, minus lambda cubed, minus A one one, plus A two two, plus A three three. Lambda squared, plus all this lambda minus determinant. Equals zero. The concern is the variant, is the variant, as such lambda, consequently, lambda squared, lambda cubed. Are invariant, which means that the equations must also remain invariant. So that's how we arrive at the great invariance. I A, which is I of A, which is A one one plus A two two plus A three three, which is the trace of the tensor. Two A is A two two, A two three, A three two, A three three. Plus A one one, A one three, A three one, A three three. Plus A one one, A one two, A two one, A two two, recognize this as the sum of the principal minors. Three A, the determinant of the tensor, this I call the first, second, and third principal invariance of the tensor. A. You can also cast the principal invariance in terms of the eigenvales of the tensor. I A is trace of A, which is lambda one, plus lambda two, plus lambda three. And two A is half into trace of A squared, minus trace of A squared. See what you have done in that case, trace of A all squared, minus trace of A squared. Trace of A, that is the full of trace of A all squared, minus trace of A squared. Which will be equal to lambda one, lambda two, plus lambda two, lambda three, plus lambda one, lambda three. You can show this. Three A, determinant of A is lambda one, lambda two, lambda three. That's the end of study session, six, let us not take any persons, then. Tensors. Square tensors, a tensor A is said to be square if A is equal to minus its transpose. So let's also write A I J, E I, tensor product of E J. So let Omega be equal to half epsilon I J K, E super I, A super J K, not as we're back in general tensors. Then for all V in R three, Omega cross V is half. Epsilon I J K, E I. Epsilon J P Q, A P Q, V K. Which is half epsilon I J K, epsilon J P Q, E I, A P Q, V K. Notice that now we can only combine epsilon super I J K, and epsilon sub J P Q. Because you're back in general tensors, that's going to give you half into. Delta K P, delta I Q, minus delta K Q, delta I P. And E I, A P Q, V K. When you apply the delta. You're going to get half into A K I. V K, E I, plus A K I, V K, E I. Why is it K? Because we swapped the indices. For. The second member of that. Bracket in there. Rather for. Take a look at this, this is A, you said P. Equals I. And Q equals K. So only this is A, this is P, you put I. And this is of Q, I put K, so this should be E I K. But if you swap. P and I becomes A K I, they must put a minus in view of the fact that A equals minus A transpose. So that two are able to marry. The two A's, A K I, A K I, we can bring them together. And then, although that be two. The two cancel the half. We are left with A K I, V K, E I. Which is A V. Does given any square tensor A, there is this vector, Omega, call the eigenvector or pseudovector, okay, so that. A V is Omega cross V for all V. Suppose we are given X Y in V. You can define the cross product of X and Y as X tensor Y minus Y tensor X. The transpose of that will be X tensor Y transpose, minus Y tensor X. Transpose. Now, X tensor Y transpose is Y tensor X. And Y tensor X transpose is X tensor Y, you get minus. X tensor Y plus Y tensor X. Which will be equal to minus X cross Y. So it shows that X cross Y is this Q tensor. So if A equals A I K, E I, that's what it is Q. Then A I I equals minus A I. Which means that A I I must be zero. A I I in this case, it's going to do it, submission. Compliment. Then, submission I less than J, A I J, E I, tensor of E J. The same as that, plus submission I greater than J, A I J, E I, tensor of E J. See, you have omitted I equals J, because you said. A I I equals minus A I I, which is zero. So you're going to sum up the ones below. Values of I less than J, and values of I greater than J. We leave the one I less than J. Then look at the one I greater than J. We swap I and J, that's what brings the minus. So minus I greater than J, the submission is, I mean, the. Any call, or that the order here is still, in place, I greater than J. The minus is coming only because you swapped I and J. And E I tensor E J. Which is I less than J, A I J, E I tensor E J. Minus, we not swap I and J, because they are dummy indices. This is not writing I greater than, you write J greater than I. If you have done that, we must also swap indices here. So A J becomes A I J, and E J, tensor product, E I. Maybe go to submission I less than J, we cannot marry. This I less than, this is J better than I, same thing as I less than J. You cannot marry the two solutions together, to get submission I less than J. A I J. E I, tensor E J, minus E J, tensor E I. Which is submission I less than J, A I J, E I, tensor product, cross product, E J. Come back to this definition, the definition on this page. X cross Y is Q, fine. Fine, it's actually better. Here's the solution, X cross Y is Y cross Z, and Y, X cross Y, X tensor product of Y minus Y tensor of X. Which is what you have in that expression, I'm sure you can figure that out on your own. Just go back to X cross Y equals X tensor, Y minus Y tensor, X. And our definition of the tensor product on the previous page. Allow it to now act on V one, V two, V three. So you get X one, Y two. Minus X two, Y one, V two. Just simple case of matrix multiplication, because you are going to the person we have here. Want to find the eigenvector, that you are going back to. Seven point one. A V, because Omega cross V. The left hand side is A V, this A V. Because we are trying to reduce it to Omega cross V. So carry out the multiplication. When compared with Omega cross V, it means that Omega two minus, Omega two V three. And W, Omega three, V two. Omega three, V one, minus Omega one, V three. Omega one, V two, minus Omega two, V one, corresponds to. What you have here now, so Omega cross V. Then, Omega one must be X three, Y two, minus X two, Y three, Omega two is X one, Y two. Minus X three, Y one, and Omega three is X two, Y one, minus X one. Y two, that means you can write Omega as a vector. The first. Component will be that, second and third. Which is minus, we can work it out here. Minus of this, which is minus, but what is this on its own, that's X cross Y. Autognon tensors, a tensor Q, so that. Inner product of Q A and Q B is A B, is A dot B, call it A and B, it's called autogon tensor. You can see that, what I've seen that is that it preserves the inner product. Q A dot Q B is similar as just A dot B. Since Q A dot Q B is B, Q transpose Q A. Once Q leaves A and goes over to B. It must be called transposed. So that's why you have B dot, Q transpose Q A, equals B dot, Q transpose Q A. If B dot, Q transpose Q A, it's going to be B dot, it means that Q transpose Q must be the identity matrix. So in a sense, we have condition for Q to be autogon, is Q, Q transpose equals the. Identity matrix. Equivalently. If you multiply both sides by. Q inverse, you get Q inverse, Q, Q transpose equals Q inverse I. Q inverse Q will be the identity matrix, so I left it only Q transpose on the left. And on the right, you have Q inverse, then you swap. Left for right to arrive at Q inverse, plus Q transpose. Note that, the determinant of Q Q transpose, the determinant of Q, the determinant of Q transpose, because the determinant of A B, is the determinant of A times the determinant of B. So, the determinant of, that is the determinant of Q. Determinant of Q. Because the determinant of Q transpose is similar to the determinant of Q. So you get the amount of Q all squared, and since we said. Q Q transpose is identity matrix, means that determinant of Q Q transpose must be equal to one. Because the determinant of an identity matrix is one. So it means that the determinant of Q is plus or minus one. Look also that autogon tensors preserve the inner product, that you have mentioned already. Q is said to be a proper autogon tensor, if the determinant of Q is one, and an improper autogon tensor, if the determinant of Q is minus one. If the determinant of Q is one, then another Q minus I. You can, because the determinant of Q minus I, that means of Q transpose. Because the amount of Q transpose, we said is one, right? So we have not done anything wrong by writing the determinant of Q minus I equals a lot of Q minus I, determinant of Q transpose. We said that the determinant of. A product of matrices is what to the sum of, of the product, is what to the product of the determinants. So the determinant of Q minus I, the determinant of Q transpose, are equal to the determinant of Q Q transpose. Minus Q transpose. But Q Q transpose is the identity matrix, so you arrive at the determinant of Q I minus Q transpose. Which is similar to the determinant of I transpose minus Q transpose transpose. So the determinants of a matrix is the same, so the determinants of his transpose. We had the determinant of I transpose, minus Q transpose, minus transpose, remove forward. So. It was plus, the determinant of I minus I, I minus Q. It was minus the determinant of Q minus I. See how we started, the determinant of Q minus I, right? And ended up with that been equal to the determinant of I. Minus Q. So plus or minus again meet, which means that the determinant of I minus Q must be zero. Therefore. If you say the determinant of. The I minus Q is zero, what is that one saying? Remember, the determinant of Q minus lambda I is the eigenvale, or rather the. Characteristic equation. For this time around. Q minus lambda is soon as Q minus one I. So lambda in this case is one. So lambda in this case is one. Therefore, one is an eigenvale, so that you can write. Q E three. It was one E three for a certain. E three. That means, exists, exists an E three, such that. Q E three equals one three. So one is lambda in this case, which is E three. So let's not choose E one, E two to be orthogonal, or to normal to E three. In terms of this basis, we are going to have. You being equal to A B zero, C D zero, and zero zero one. You transpose that, you get A C zero, B T zero, zero zero one. So Q Q transpose. Then be equal to one, zero, 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 one, zero, zero, one. If you multiply Q and Q transpose these two matrices, you're going to get A squared plus B squared, A C plus B T zero. C A plus B T, C squared plus this square zero, C F zero, zero. Put all this together, I have A squared plus B squared being equal to one. Which is also equal to C squared plus this square, if the two matrices are equal. A C plus B T, C D A plus B T must also be zero. In addition, remember that the determinant of Q. Which is A D minus B C is one, equals Q. It's an orthogonal matrix. From equation two. You get a B was minus A C. Over D. Put this in three, you get A D plus A C squared by D possible. We can rearrange that, alright, to arrive at A equals D. Don't forget that C squared plus this square is one. It must mean that A equals D. Then I use A equals D in two, to get C equals minus. Therefore, Q is A B zero minus B A zero, 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 one. With. The proviso, A squared plus B squared, B one. Therefore. If you have A squared plus, plus B squared being equal to one, something comes to mind. Cos theta plus sine squared theta. So A could be cos theta, and B could be sine. Theta, so you get cos theta, sine theta, zero. Minus sine theta, cos theta, zero. And zero, zero, one. What's the interpretation of this? You go back to our definition of. The. Tensor product. It's like saying cos theta, E one tensor E two, E one is E one. Plus sine theta, E one tensor E two. Plus zero. E one tensor E three, so you omitted that. And minus sine theta, E two tensor E one. Plus cos theta, E two tensor E two. Plus zero. E two tensor E three, so that's missing. Only term that exists, that survives the. The third rule, it's just E three tensor E three, that is one E three tensor E three. This corresponds to a traditional about this particular to E three. Symmetric tensors, in the case of a symmetric tensor, A plus A transpose. So I'm going to choose E one, E two, E three as eigenvectors of A, with eigenvales lambda, lambda two, lambda three. That can write A E K, because lambda K E K. There's no solution in this case. That is A E one equals lambda one, E one. A E two is lambda two, A two, A three, lambda three, E three. Taking the dot product on both sides with E J and swapping left for right. Lambda K. Into E K dot E J, it was A E K. Dot E J. Because lambda K E K is A E K. Which is equal to E K. Dot A transpose. It, we said, if H move over to the other. Member of the natural, it must become transposed. Which is equal to E K dot A E J, because A transpose is A. This E K, not lambda J, E J. Which is lambda J into E K dot E J. You can rewrite that by taking everything to the left, so lambda K and lambda J, E K dot E J equals zero. This means that if lambda J is not equal to lambda K. Then E K dot E J must be zero, which means that they are auto. Let us choose E one, E two, E three to be unit vectors, then E I dot E J will be called to data. And A will then be equal to lambda one, E one, tensor E one. Plus lambda two, E two, tensor E two. Plus lambda three, E three, tensor E three. Which is referred to as the spectral representation of a symmetric. Tensor. The tensor B is said to be positive semi-definite if A dot B A is greater than equal to zero for all A. In the vector space. If you put the stronger condition, A dot B A greater than square root of zero, for all non-zero A and B. Then B is said to be positive definite. The terms negative semi-definite and negative definite apply to tensors whose negatives are. Positive semi-definite and positive definite respectively. Let B be, A be a positive semi-definite symmetric tensor with proper numbers, that's the right, by the lambda I. And as cited, unit proper vectors, P I, A plus one, two, three. Then from the definition of tensor product. U tensor V A is A dot V U. And. If you bring in the. Semi-definiteness of. What we're talking about, they have A dot A. Being greater than equal to. Zero, so, and A equals lambda one. P one tensor P one, plus lambda two, P two tensor P two, plus lambda three, P three, three, tensor P three. Now we see that A dot A A. Is lambda J. Into A dot P J squared. It's greater than. Equal to zero, just go back to A, but A A. Because I put to zero. For all A in P. Lambda one is better than I put to zero, lambda two better than I put to zero, lambda three better than I put to. Zero. That's. The only condition in which lambda J into A dot P J R squared. Will be greater than equal to zero, because A dot P J R squared on his own is greater than zero. So if it's going to be, if lambda J, A dot P J squared. Will be greater than equal to zero, it must be that lambda J itself. Is greater than equal to zero, so lambda one is greater than equal to zero, lambda two is greater than equal to zero, and number three is greater than equal to zero. The tensor root A. Defined by root of A equals J equals one, two, three. Lambda J to power half, P J tensor of P J. Is symmetric. And positive semi-definite, and it can be shown that this. Is square, you see, A. Is it? Indeed, a positive semi-definite symmetric tensor has a unique semi-definite symmetric square root. With spectral representation as given in the last mission. A positive definite symmetric tensor has, has positive proper numbers, hence from the fact that. The amount of S is the product of the. Eigenvales. Determinants of S, when we plan that. S is invertible. S is invertible, determinant is not zero, could be positive or negative. In this case is positive, the spectral representation of the inverse is S inverse, because J equals one, two, three. Lambda J to power minus one. P J tensor P J. The conclusion then is that, given any matrix, A, you can write A as equal to A one plus A two. With A one symmetric, and A two scale. But, if you add. This, if you find half of A plus A transpose. And half of A minus A transpose, they will arrive at A one. Plus. Eight. Given any matrix, A, A A transpose is symmetric. So, A A transpose, transpose, A transpose, transpose, A transpose. Which is equal to A A transpose. Because A B transpose is B transpose A transpose. Now let's A Q B equal to A. Then root of A A transpose inverse. Then Q Q transpose is going to be A. Root of A A transpose inverse, root of A A transpose. Inverse. Transpose. Then A transpose outside, that's going to be A into root of A A transpose inverse. Root of A A transpose, transpose, inverse, A transpose. It be equal to, uh, square root of. A A transpose inverse. Square of A A transpose inverse, A transpose. Which is A, you can bring the. Two of these ones into the same square root. To get A A transpose, A A transpose, then the inverse is out. Then. And A transpose. It should be equal to A. A transpose, because what you now have inside that square sign. Is a square. But A A transpose, A transpose. Which is A. A inverse. A transpose inverse, A transpose. Which is the identity matrix, because A A transpose is symmetric. Q is orthogonal, let's, as we postcards of A A transpose, then S is symmetric. And Q is orthogonal. And A, which is Q S, meaning that since A is arbitrary, any matrix. Can be written as a product of a symmetric and an orthogonal. Matrix. Given the identity, U tensor V S equals S dot V, you show that if P is a unit vector. P tensor P is the identity. Tensor. Hence, prove that I minus two P tensor P is an improper. Orthogonal. So let P be a unit vector, then S will be equal to S dot P. P. Then I S equals S of course. Thus, P tensor P S equals S dot P P. Which is S. Which is I S or P tensor P equals the identity. Tensor. Hence, I minus two P tensor P equals minus two I. Is Q symmetric matrix, because I said. Is an. Symmetric. The determinant, which is the sum of the diagonal elements in this case, mean diagonal matrix is negative. Recall that. You said the determinant of an improper orthogonal matrix is negative, thus I minus two P tensor P. Than improper. Orthogonal. Amishian matrices, the adjoint or Amishian conjugate of a matrix A is given by adjoint of A equals. A star. Which is A transpose. Complex, rather, A dagger. Is A transpose star. Or A star transpose. The Amishian matrix is the complex equivalent of a real symmetric matrix. Satisfying. A dagger. Equals A. In the same way, in the corresponding square matrix, the magic matrix is the complex equivalent of a real Q symmetric matrix. Any complex square matrix can be written as the sum of a Amishian matrix and then, and, and. Anti-Amishian matrix. Unitary matrices, normal matrices, the compressed analog of a real orthogonal matrix is unitary matrix, that is. A A dagger equals I. Or equivalently, A dagger equals A inverse. A normal matrix is one that commutes with, I mean, it's Amishian conjugates, is A A dagger, called A dagger A. Now here's the question. Is the matrix I minus one, one, zero, a normal matrix, just check. If A A dagger equals A dagger A. That you have done here. The matrix is normal, I'm sure you can figure that. Other session is. The metric of fundamental tensor. And for vectors. In n-dimensional inclusion space, my question is, the distance between two points. Yes, credit equals submission, A equals one, two, N. The X I squared. Which we said. Must be written as. Sumtion I equals one, two, N, D X I, D X I. Remember, we don't use the same index. Or the X I, D X J, please. The X I squared, the X I, D X J. In general, coordinates, we have to modify this equation to take into consideration the fact that the basis vectors are honestly autonomous. We have to make a distinction between coherent and contravariant vectors. The question for the distance between two points now involves symmetry factor G I G. Which you call the metric tensor, indeed. The S squared is G I G, D X I, D X J. Notice that. G is coherent. Of second rank. And the X I, the X J are contract. Upon the transformation into another coordinate system, the bad system. Distance between two points should be variance, so. S squared equals G I J, D X I, D X J, equals G I G bar. X I bar, D X J bar. G I G is symmetric, let us see. How we do this? Yes, credit is G I G, D X I, D X J, is G I G, D X J, X I. Since we are swapping. D X I and D X J. As D X I, D X J, equals D X J, D X I. But I and J are just dummy indices since they appear in upper lower. Fashion. And therefore, interchanging them, and eventually remain the same. And the S squared is G I J. D X I. D X J. Which is G J I. D X J, D X I. Or G I J, bring it into the left, G I J, D X I, D X J minus G J I. Yes, I then be equal to zero. But yes, I then is common, so I left it T I G minus G J I, yes, I then D equals zero. But in general, the X I then they cannot be zero. Therefore, follows that, G I J must be G J I. Means that G I J is symmetric. In terms of the contrarian components of a vector, we write V as A sub I, A sub I. Those are contrarian components, A super. So I will cover the coherent components by, you might recall all this, A sub I equals E sub I dot V. Which is E sub I dot A J, E J. Which is E. I dot E J, A J. Because I said that E I E J is actually G I J. So that A I equals G I J. A J. Notice that the index has been lowered. It's already with A super G, now we have A sub. A super I, we now have A sub. But A super G, A sub I. Don't forget that, the G depends on G will be summed out here, so the only index that we survive on the right is actually I. And it's now. A sub. We therefore have a way of recovering the coherent component, A I from the contrarian component, A super I. Yeah, G is a second rank tensor. Because G I J is E, yeah, yeah, bar. That is the transformation. Is A I bar, not E K bar, which is that. Dot that, left is D X K. D X bar I, D X N, D X bar J, E K dot E N. Which is D X K, D X I bar, D X N, D X bar J, G K M. To compare this equation with. That often. Coherent. Transformation. You found out that, and this is indeed. A second rank. Coherent. Tensor. In three-dimensional Euclidean space, you can do right equation eight point five. As A one, A two, A three, plus G one, G one, transversal product. A one, A two, A three. Which is metric G I J, A one, A two, A three. Which also means that we can multiply both sides on the left with the inverse of G I J. As a G I J inverse, if you do that. G I J inverse. A one, A two, A three, because G I J inverse, G I J, A one, A two, A three. G I J inverse, G I J, we give you the identity matrix, identity matrix, we give you A one, A two, three, we give you A one, A two, three again. So G one, G I J inverse is G. Super I J. It is the inverse of G I J. The determinant of a matrix is the determinant of its inverse. So G I J and G, the G sub I J and G sub I J have the same inverse. That should be determinant. Have the same determinant. Which will repair the G. You will know that the, you can write B equals A super I, E sub I plus, you can also write as B sub J, E super J. Where it said E J, E sub J, J equals one to N, this is because this is of. E I, A sub I, I equals one to N. Recall that A sub I is G I J A J. Suppose the contrarian components of vectors, vector E I is A M I. And the coherent component is A K super I. Then A M I equals G M K, A sub K super I. Since A M I and the contrarian conclusion, you can write E super I equals A M I E sub M. As A sub M I, A sub M. But also, E super I is Delta I K, E K, therefore, A super I sub K. It was Delta. Super I, sub K. A M I equals G M K. A super I. A sub, I mean, A super I K, sub K rather. Which is G M K, Delta I K. Which is G super M I. Dependenance on K having been summed up, hence. E super I equals G. S by M I, E sub M. Here. You are raising the index. Indeed, E super I dot E super J. Because G super I K, G super J N, E K dot E N. Is G I K, G J N, G K M. Which is G I K, G K M, G J M. Which is Delta I M, G J M. Because G I K, D K M. Super sub, we give you Delta I M, Delta super I sub N. And G J M. Which of course is equal to G T I, which is set. M equal to I, which is G. Super G I J, note that G J M, E K M is Delta J K. Because G I J equals G, that is G. Super I J. Because G sub I J inverse. The last inequality in equation eight levels is the fact that D super I J is symmetric, so G super I J equals G super J. Thus, the metric tensor G sub I J can be used to lower an index, whereas I, this by they can be used to raise index. A sub I equals G sub I J, A sub J. And A sub I equals G super I J, A sub J. E sub I is G sub I J. E super J. And E sub I equals G super I J, E sub J. If you apply the lowering index, for instance. You can show the invariant expression is G sub I J, A sub I, B sub J. Enough product defined earlier. G I J, G sub I J, A sub I acting on, and G I J acting on A sub I, we give you A sub J. To get A J, A sub J, B super J. You can also try the other one. Allow. G super I J to act on A sub I, B sub J. I'm going to arrive at A super J, A sub J. And I'll see why we said the inner product of A and B. General coordinates is going to be G sub I J. A sub I. B sub J. D sub I J is by return. A sub I, which is a co-contravariant. Vector to a coherent. Vector in the co-vector space. In the draw space. The metric tensor for spherical coordinates is E sub I J equals one over G one one. Zero, zero, one over G two two, zero, zero. So if we put all that. We are well defined, I want to see why later. N one one is one, U two two is R squared, and U three three is R squared sine squared theta. Using this information, raise indices of the vector. A sub. I equals one. R squared sine theta, two sine theta, that's just the A because not A sub. One, R squared sine theta, two, two squared theta. A sub J is G. Super I J, A sub I. Which is one, zero, zero, one of ours, zero, one of ours, plus zero, 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 one of ours, plus sine theta. On one, R squared sine theta, two sine squared theta. To carry out that. Product. But multiplication arrive at one, sine theta. One over two, R squared. Tensor and relativity, one of the possibilities of special relativity according to Einstein. Is that the speed of light is invariant in all reference frames, relativity of course, you have course to deal with four dimensions. One of time and three of space, hence the coordinates are. X I equals C T. X. Y. Z. And the diamond becomes D S squared equals C D T squared minus D X squared minus D Y squared minus Z squared. You can write this in metric form as D S squared equals one, zero, 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 one, zero, minus one, three, zero. Zero, minus one, zero, 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 minus one. D X I, D X J. Which is G I J, D X I, D X J, it means that the metric tensor in this case is G sub I J. Which is the matrix in equation eight, eighteen. And it's what we call the Minkowski. Metric tensor. Note that we also define the S squared as people to minus C D T R squared. Plus the X squared, plus the Y squared, plus the Z squared, and each and three in the tricks. Is minus whatever value it is in equation eight twenty. The concept. Or the context will be clear in each case, not considered, the context will be clear in each case. Unlike the case of three vectors, X Y, the line element could be less than zero. Equal to zero or greater than zero, for it to be zero. C squared, D T squared equals the X squared plus the Y squared plus the Z squared. Which of course, if the three events are connected by area of light, we say the line element is small. In that case, you can write the C D T R squared equals the X squared plus the Y squared plus the Z squared. If the line element is less than zero, we say the interval between the two events is spacelike. It is time like. It is greater than zero. Since the screen is a killer, it is a brilliant under a transformation from one policy system to another. We will collect that in the theory of special relativity. Lorentz transformation requires. X prime equals gamma into X minus B T. Y prime is Y, Z is Z, Z prime is Z, and T prime is gamma into T minus B over C squared. X squared plus Y squared plus Z squared minus C squared, C squared equals Delta S R squared. We multiply equation eight twenty five, not eight, not eight five, eight twenty five by C. You can see T prime equals gamma C into T minus B over C squared. Which is gamma C T minus gamma V. Over C. See, I've got X prime equals gamma into X minus B T, which is gamma X minus gamma V. Over C, C T. Y prime is Y, and Z prime is Z. You can then write our equations in the matrix form. C T prime, X prime, Y prime, Z prime. Equals a matrix. Multiplied by C T, X, Y. Z. Should be obvious why we automatically apply T prime by C. So that. We now have. That particular equation. In the form. Of. Distance. Since X prime. X, Y, and Z are distances. The other same way, we handled three vectors. We also have the interval between two events. That are C T prime, that are X prime, that are Y prime, that are Z prime. Just replace. C T, X, Y, and Z on the right by Delta C T, that X. That Y, that's leading to the invariant square of the ring. That S R squared is C Delta T R squared minus. The X squared plus the Y squared plus the Z squared. Which is all that, which is the S prime squared in the prime. Of next system. Where the S could be negative, zero, or positive. Who said that S squared is a variance, this is killer. In the unbad, unprimed. Coordinate system, it doesn't have any problems, you see that that is where it minus all that. In the prime. System, C Delta T prime. This and so forth. However, the angle between two subvectors is also scalar, so it must also be invariant. Another for vector transformation is momentum. For vector. The prime over C. Has to be in that form, so that we have the same unit as P, X, P, Y, and P Z. The same matrix. And you have what you have there, the later three. The velocity for vector is V, which is D X, D top. D X. The T, the top, D X, the top. The Y, the top, Z, the top, where the top is D S by C. Which is a proper time interval, check out the square of the length, but a proper time interval. Is right, C T equals X naught, in addition to the, which is something we adopted earlier. X naught will be C T, X one will be X, X two will be Y, and X three will be Z. Now those defines these components with the components. We have identified this component with the components of a contravariant vector. And the Lorentz transformation now takes the form of the X mu prime. Equals formation, new equals zero to three. Gamma mu nu. Delta X nu. Which is A mu nu, or gamma mu nu, that X nu. It is this submission convention adopted. To compare this with equation four point one. A super I bar. It was the X bar, I, D X J, A J. It shows that this transforms as a contravariant. Vector. The interval that I squared equals G mu nu, that I X mu, that I X nu. Where G mu nu is the metric tensor. Note that gamma mu nu and G mu nu are tensors of rank. Sure that before, general velocity is the speed of light. The general velocity vector is V equals gamma. C, X dot, Y dot, Z dot. You know, product of this vector is self, giving gamma squared. Then. As our G I J. V I, V J. Which will be called to gamma squared, V naught squared, minus V one squared, minus V two squared, minus V three squared. Since V naught is C. When you want prime squared, plus V two prime squared, plus V three prime squared is B squared. V B we go to gamma squared. Into C squared minus B squared. Which is. One over square root of one minus B squared. C squared. Into C squared minus. B squared, don't forget that gamma is one of us part of this, one minus B squared over C squared. What we don't get is C squared minus B squared over one minus B squared. Versus squared, which is C squared. But the wood loss of V would then be from the spell of V B, which is because of C squared, which is in C. Now the end of study session. Eight. You already have the study sessions. Eleven and above, so you have only nine and ten left. For the next class, we look at coordinate systems.